Good evening, it's 7 o'clock, we have a forum, we'll call the planning board meeting to order. First up for general information is VHB for some minor changes to the senior center.
So this is the update set.
That's just the plan to change the effect of that?
Yeah. What he's setting up.
Erosion control rendering.
This is the rendering.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Jeff Galardo, I'm a project engineer with VHB. And we're here tonight, mostly with Phil Blumbo from Colliers. We're here tonight just to submit and present some of the minor changes to the senior center project. If you, the plans that you have, you'll see what we've done is we added a bullet list of those changes right on the cover sheet. So they're clear. Also for this set, we have, you'll notice that it's the original set that was submitted that you guys have on record, shows the library plans, but I did put a note under there that this submission will not include anything from the library since we're only making changes for the senior center. So what I'll do is I'll, you'll have the list there, I'll flip to some of the sheets that will show the changes. This is the overall plan. And I'll just shoot right to 102 to show the blow up of the senior center. So the first change I want to point out here is the building footprint. The square footage stayed the same, however, there was just a minor change in the footprint of the front of the building. And you'll see that the, the jogs in the building is a hair different than what they were in the prior seminoles. By doing that, we had to just slide some of the roof leaders here and there just to make the connections into the underground stormwater management system. Along the south side of the building, we added three, one here, here, and here, signs for no parking, for fire lane parking, per the fire chief, if he's here tonight somewhere. And then also in the front of the building where we have the loading zone, where it's painted hatch on the ground, we had it originally called it as drop off zone, but what we've done is we added no parking to prevent anybody from sitting there. It's just drop off and leave, that way it's clear for fire zone. We added one light pole in this little end island here, and then a light pole over here was shifted over two or three feet. And that will be reflected on the photometrics plan, that is part of this set. Landscaping through the conservation commission, we actually had some comments back from them, and maybe I can shoot right to C200 if you'd like. In the back rear of the site, you'll see that there's that 35-foot no disturb zone, so what they've asked us to do is introduce some plantings along that buffer zone to prevent anybody from any snow or yard debris clippings being pushed in within that 35-foot no disturb to eliminate any impact to the wetlands. So you'll see along here, there's a couple of different varieties, species of plantings, as well as we continue to have the screening for some of the above-ground structures in the back, condensing units generator.
That's away from the Broward Hill?
Yeah, so, sorry to point out, the property line is right here.
Where's that, where's the property line?
Let me just show you on here. Property line, see, that's the pound right there, so there's the property line. But the 35-foot wetland no disturb is right here. So those plantings right here, the VCs and the CRs, will just mimic that part.
So there's rule on the other side to maintain those grounds?
Right, yeah, so they just didn't want any grass clippings to be pushed close to the wetlands or any snow.
Yeah, there's one over here every summer.
Over here, yeah, okay. So by doing that, we actually, you'll see on erosion control, it changed the limit of work line. So the limit of work line used to be here along the property line. We basically brought, you know, for their submission, brought it up to here. So that we know where it passed, passed there, other than just removing the different payments that's there and replanting the grass. We probably just pointed out here, prior to this submittal, we had a monument sign located right up in this area that's now been removed, and I think, Phil, did you just give them the?
Yeah, so on that rendering, you'll see they elected to go with a building mounted sign on the front side, the building committee's already on that.
So you replaced the monument sign with this one?
Correct.
Okay, in the P, yeah.
Yeah, and it could probably, yeah, that's exactly what you should have done, the underspan over here, building elevation. So you'll see it right here on the, the P right there.
Is there a sign in aisle facing group nine on that?
I'm sorry?
You can see that from group nine right at that moment?
Uh, this will be, this is the front of the building, so, right here.
So along, along group nine, you won't see that building mounted sign?
No, I saw maybe add another corner.
You haven't collectively decided on a sign or a street line yet, have you?
No, we're courting with the library team on that.
Roughly the size of the sign on the building?
I can find that out.
He doesn't have any of it. I can get that from the team.
Yeah, just for the record.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure it's under the limit, but it's one of minutes to play.
And that wraps up the changes.
So there's one other item I need to add, so we gave you the rendering, the other item that was in the site plan approval for you guys was to go over roof color selection.
Okay.
So the senior senate building committee voted to go with this weathered slate option. I would say per the site plan approval you guys.
Weathered slate?
Yes.
So that, this is going to be the basis of design, obviously a roofing contractor can submit a different manufacturer, but we'll enforce that they meet that color as closely as possible.
Jeff, you mentioned there was going to be no change in the footprint of the building.
The square footage.
Total square footage is the same.
Total square footage stayed the same. The majority of the, majority of the building here, footprints stayed the same. It's just this has a little bit of a different jog.
Well, that's in the reduction of the, the one that you preliminary gave to us.
It's still 3,350 square feet?
10,350.
Yes. But wasn't there supposed to be some reduction in the size of the building?
There was, there was.
Yeah.
From the beginning.
From the beginning.
But not, the November 20th submittal, last submittal was the same square footage as this, yeah. Way back, it was, it was larger.
Or something.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the changes as shown on the plan.
The second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you vote? Motion passing.
Great, thank you very much.
When's your target date for the reduction down this?
Early March, one of its times, Thursday to DC's.
Of this year?
Yeah.
Peter Watson?
And I'm planning out official way. UMass is recently purchased the building at 400.
This is for the Desco project?
No.
Oh no, this is the NES one, right?
Yeah, this is the Pearson NCS.
Yeah, they got a UMass.
Oh, this building is a UMass, but the old block on it is existing. It's too close to the town. They're going to sell them in the next, do the 400 set backs.
Oh, okay.
UMass is going to buy that?
This, this one, yeah.
So that, that, that free, that's a tax free guy?
They take it off the tax.
So who owns the whole?
NCS Pearson.
They still own that, and various, various places own the other part, and... West Mass still owns some parts of the plant.
That's going to be the desk.
No, no, the other one is up the medical building, the, those at the wait a minute, so that's after, you bring that out.
Originally, you were going to improve the layout of that second building. It was going to be, those two lots were going to be merged. And so the setback didn't matter. No new bunch of shots.
Next is David Briggs.
Good evening, gentlemen, my name is David Briggs, I own Vision Showcase. Due to the construction and the impending loss of our building, we're moving to 207 Russell Street, Unit 15, with McMillan Group. I got notified at 6 o'clock tonight, our sign sample was not ready because they did not know how much square footage was allowed for a building on the side. What they're proposing is basically a wood painted sign with our name on it, Vision Showcase High Care Center. But they didn't know the square footage.
Wait, where is, where's 207, what did you say, 207?
207, the new twin buildings, it's 597.
Oh, oh, the, 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 the nail, nail place, nail, nail.
Yeah, yeah.
And we're just approving the dentures.
We just passed it.
Yeah, we're taking the other front.
40 square feet, 40 square feet is what you're allowing.
40. Okay, also it's told, still need to show up because the ladder or monument sign, there's just going to be a vinyl decal with our name on it on one of the sections, to make sure that that is all right. None of the signs will be backlit or illuminated, if it is, it'd be like a...
It can be backward.
It can be backward, not illuminated through the sign like what we have with original.
Right, yes.
So we're clear on that. Other than that, I need to submit a sample of what the sign would be?
Yeah, you can come back in two weeks and show us that. And they're showing, you've got 40 square feet, and you're putting a name on the pylon up front, it's along with the rest of them.
Is there any color restrictions?
It's supposed to comply with the American, in the, what is the words?
Historical palette.
Historical palette. So it can't be any outlandish colors, but it's like a...
It's just a standard red with white border.
That should not be a problem.
Okay. Also, the, McMillan was wanting me to ask too, is there anything about window signage that would be prohibited? As an eyeglass place, we have, sometimes we have like models with, you know, glasses, you know, for window hangings.
You're allowed, there's only bylaw has what you're allowed for window sign. I believe you're allowed two window signs or something like that.
Okay.
In your windows, but it might be, I don't know if that'd be positive.
I'll check with them.
But it's in the bylaw.
Okay.
The bylaw's online.
They'll have it ready now that I can give the size.
Okay.
Good evening.
Thank you. John McMillan?
For the fire station?
For the fire station?
This is for the fire station?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah, that's fine. We will open the public hearing on this fire station.
Before you start, gentlemen, I would like to have a fact, you're going to turn. Because I'm considered a municipal employee, because I own land, a budding property, I'm just, the fire station's going to be built, I'm deemed to have a potential conflict, therefore I'm going to have to recuse myself from any debate on this matter, any motions on this matter, and any votes on this matter, so I hereby recuse myself.
Okay. The Halle Planning Board will conduct the public hearing on Tuesday, February 19th, 2019, beginning at 7:15 PM in the Hadley Senior Center Meeting Room. Purpose of the hearing is to review the application of the Town of Hadley for special permits, site plan approval, and erosion and sediment control for approximately a 5,300 square foot fire station to be located on River Drive and north of Hadley, approximately across the Stockbridge Street. The application and plan will be viewed in the Town Clerk's office during normal business hours, published place in the Gazette February 4 and 11.
Yes, good evening, my name is Carlos Nieto from the Berkshire Design Group, and I'm here to present the side part of the Halle, North Halle Fire Substation project. Wanted to go quickly and go over the existing conditions, which is this survey that I'm showing here. Just to place you, this Stockbridge Road, River Drive, this is north, that is going south. This is our parcel, 9.15 acres of land. Approximately, we have area of resource or wetts back here, and I think it's going to be better shown in the existing conditions. There are some resource areas on the back of the property, but it doesn't really affect the area where we are locating the building. We were in front of Kongkong to show them that and to, for them to approve the domination of the resources that were back there. So resource area wise, the parcel doesn't have any issues. Currently, it is a crop field, fairly flat, except for a knoll or elevation about seven, six to seven feet that happens on the north side of the parcel. As you get to the back of the parcel, it drops significantly as it goes through the budding property, but for the most part, it is a flat parcel. And then we want to present the proposed buildings. So this is the proposed fire station, this is a smaller scale, 20 scale, so that's why you're not seeing the whole site as you were seeing here. So we had to submit to create the plans for you. But what you're seeing here is start off the building for the fire station itself, two curb cuts on River Road, one for the apparatus bay, one for a public entrance and parking area on the side, and also to access the back of the, of the fire station. There will be one through bay on the fire station, as we are showing right now, so this also would be the way to access the back bay of the fire station. The, there are one main public entrance right in front of the, of the building, which has an accessible parking space, and it's at grade, so the idea is that it's all accessible. The building is a one-story building, as you probably saw on, on the application itself. And then some public area, from area for some public spaces, and then most of the rest of this, what we're showing, is going to be the parking spaces for the people using the actual fire station. On the, on the back end of the, of the area of the project, we're going to have a trash receptacle that's going to be screened, as well as the parking lots are going to be screened with shrubs and berms or elevations that are going to be on the side in here, so that we don't have direct sites into the parking lot itself. There are about five, well, one and two double lights on the project to illuminate and create safety on the parking area itself. There will be one 40-square-foot sign on the entrance, which will be illuminated, and it would be the same as the one on the existing fire station, so that's the, the look of the actual sign. The, we will have a 20, this is a 24-foot wide curb cut, and then we are providing a 37-foot wide curb cut for the two apparatus bays, which is what you're, you're seeing on this side. As, as we go through some of the utilities on the site, the whole site is sheet flowed, so most of this parking lot is draining without having structures, and going over vegetated areas to remove any suspended solids and to clean, and then it goes into some, a shallow, single shallow detention basin, very shallow. The idea is about two, maybe three feet, but in a very wide area, so it's, it's easy to maintain, and only grass. There will be an overflow to that in the event of a great storm that surpasses the capacity, and there's an overflow that will go to a catch basin right on the, on River Road. For the most part, for demolition and erosion control, the site is a very, pretty much open, there's really nothing, nothing there, it's just crop field, so we are showing a limit of work, which it's around about two acres of disturbance that we're doing within the site. Erosion control measures surrounding the area of where the work is going to be done, two vehicle track paths to prevent any erosion. The building will be served by town water, town sewer, and as we said, the drainage system is going to compress a shallow retaining basin, and then all the water's going to be sheet flowed, and then filtered through the grass area into it. There, this is the overflow pipe that we had talked about before. The design is for 100-year storms to be kept within the site, 80, more than 80% TSS removal, so it complies with all regulations in that sense for drainage.
That's the current MS4, the new MS4?
Yeah, the MS4 is the separation between sewer and drainage. In this case, it meets all the state regulations and the town regulations. As it was, needless to say, the, the whole site was reviewed by a third party, and they reviewed all the drainage, and they had very minor comments, basically two minor comments in regards to it, and nothing really in regards to the drainage system.
Carlos, the MS4 is directed against the cross between water and sewer?
It's sewer.
That is its primary job, right?
Yes, and, and in this case, we're totally separated, both of those. And in particular, when we go into the drain, the sewer system, we will, we'll have a contamination tank that will handle all the drainage that happens within the actual apparatus bay, so any contaminants will go there, and that's a type of tank that gets serviced, and it separates oils and other contaminants, and then it connects them to the sewer system. And we have two manholes, and then connecting to the municipal sewer system at the end of, basically at the end of this line, the same as the drainage.
Where does that sewer end, there's a manhole on, off the road?
On, on the actual center of the road, on River Drive, and this is the sewer that go.
I know, but where's it, where's it going to, where directly is going into the property?
It's right there, that's, that's our sewer.
No, from there, I know from the manhole, you're going to where, that manhole?
Yeah, this is an internal manhole that we propose inside of our property, just to change directions.
So then that manhole there could be tapped in in the future for future development?
Oh, of course, yeah, and that's one of the other reasons why we're, we have it right, right there. And then we have two, one other manhole, again, just to handle the changing in directions from that for all the pipes that are coming in from the, from the actual building.
How deep are those manholes there?
The manhole, I believe the new sanitary manhole, 153 to 146, so these are about seven feet, six to seven feet. To the bottom there, so 146 to 153.
Yeah, because that's the high end on the front.
Mm-hmm, and we're, and we're, and we're right at the threshold of getting to that next manhole. In regards to the utilities, we've also, water and electric has been laid out in a way, in the same way that the sewer having that extra manhole, that we provided water all the way to the end of the back of the project, so there is a main that goes in, six-inch main that goes in, ends in a hydrant right now for future, any future use that want it to happen there, so that there is water on the back of the property, and then it splits to our building.
What size is the main that you tapping into?
We are tapping into, I believe, there are electric, it's a sanitary forest main, that's 36. There's a 12-inch main, and... And then we have, yeah, a 12-inch main.
Okay, my question, you, you ended it with a six-inch.
There's, first, first of all, when we start out, we're connecting water service with a 12-by-8 tapping sleeve, so a reducer as we go from the main.
From 12 to 8?
Yes, and then from there, we are moving all the way, we, we have another reducer, an 8 to 6.
Why are you reducing that, not leaving a 8 all the way for future tap-ins?
Well, we...
God knows what.
We could tap on that 8, that's in here, the main one, and then we...
Then you're going to go across and dig up the parking lot.
Yeah, and then we...
Like, where is it?
This, this 8 is running across the grass, never mind that.
Yes, as it keeps going into the grass.
Okay, well, I thought you, the way you look at it, it was going this way.
No, it, it stops here, and the idea is that then, yeah, we have the two mains that are going into our building, one fire service, and then the domestic service, and then it splits again and goes into our fire hydrant at the back. And then we've also laid out two... And then, we've also laid out two electric conduits, again, for any future use coming out of the mechanical room, so that we can have electric on the back and, and have it outside of the parking lot, so we don't have to dig out the parking lot to meet the electric. So, as far as, as site utilities, as I mentioned, there are four lipos in, in the site, but, and then, there are several pads, one for a transform, for a, sorry, for a-
Generator?
Generator, and then, we have one for the HVAC on the back, so we've kept it on the back, so it's not visible and not visible from the road.
How much noise out of those things going north and south to the house, to the south and the house to the north?
So, sorry, what?
What's the DPA rating of the generator? We'll need that, we'll need that.
And, and that's the MEP, the mechanical engineer, so we will have, you'll ask the question to the mechanical engineer at that point. Do you know?
We'll, we'll get it though.
That's a mechanical engineer. So, the two pads for the two, for HVAC and then for the, and then the transformer is going to be, instead of having a pad and a transformer, because of the use, we can have a transformer on the pole, and that's, the transformer's going to be in the pole, so there won't be a, an extra transformer on, on the site. So, one little detail that I, I didn't talk about, we have a future bay, so there's space for a future bay that could happen on this side, and the idea is that there's still some, we've left the space available so that there could be circulation. We left most of our utilities out of that area. That generator will be powered by two propane tanks, they're going to be buried, they're underground propane tanks on the, on the outside edge.
And they, for, for the way, for the future expansion of gas tanks?
I believe, from, again, from, from the MEP, I believe that this is sufficient for the generator and some extra, so, yes, there's space for expansion.
But if any reason, that station is expanded to the north, where, how far away from the parking lot, and if they have to extend the swing and that extra door on the north end?
If they had to extend, we're-
Yeah, when you got that, where your-
Figures, yeah.
Extended building is extended?
Yep.
You would have to blacktop the back and put another door in?
Basically, you would blacktop here, and, yes, there would be an extension of the building and a-
Would those tanks be on the, on the edge of them, or away from them?
Away from those tanks, I mean, we were still probably a good 10 feet away, we're more than 20 feet away from those tanks.
Okay, so that's plenty of room for expansion?
Yes, yeah, yeah, exactly, and, and the idea was that we left the space so that we could do that, grading-wise and utility-wise. So, we got two gas tanks. I think utility-wise, I've, I've run through all the utilities on, on, on the building itself.
The water drainage, the overflow goes into the catch basin, where does the catch basin go? Does it go?
Eventually, it keeps going south.
South, and eventually ends-
Ends up in Warner Pond.
Warner Pond, not, not the river.
Yeah, yeah, we are at kind of a high point, so everything goes either that way or this way. So, this is the end of both the drainage line and also our sewer line.
Carlos, what's the invert, invert height on that drainage that you're tapping in, your overflow pipe?
The invert, down in the actual catch basin, the invert is 148, 48.
And the, the surface is 152, right there?
Oh, you mean, okay, sorry, the invert out of the actual overflow?
Right.
Invert is 151.5, and what we've done is, we've basically done a head wall there, so we're not, we don't have a catch basin that goes way deep, because the issue what we have is, it's such a long run to get, have this overflow, that if we were to put any structure that went deeper, you know, deep, that would, would be, would make it really impossible to hit that invert. So, what we have is basically a, just a, a pipe with concrete right at the edge, so that water would go in and then drain down to our, to our catch basin and the-
And drainage pipe is almost flat?
Yes, almost flat, we are at 1.1%, it's a 12-inch, and, and it's, you know, again, it's because it's an overflow, it's higher than, you know, it's, it's set back from the bottom of these catch basins, so the catch basin can retain all the water unless there is a great event, and then it would overflow. Others, you know, site features, again, we have some berms, there, there is a multi, a multi-use for those. First of all, is to create some privacy into the parking lot and, and screening into the parking lot, so we don't, we don't want to have that. We've set them back so that there is plenty of space for cars to go out, away from that berm, so they can have sidelines on both sides. The other reasoning is that the site in itself, because it was an older agricultural use, the soil conditions, there is some contaminants on the soil, meaning there was pesticides and herbicides and that sort of thing that was used, and we're trying to keep as much of the material within the site, so that we don't have to spend any money on getting it, you know, trucking it out of the site, being that it would have some pesticides and other materials. So, the berms are also multifunctional to, to be able to keep some of that soil in the site and not have to take it out of the site.
Is there, Carlos, is there any recovery manholes to take care of, there's a, say, leaky gas tank, somebody parks in there, and what's that do? Does that run into the, into that little retainer?
Well, anything that happens within the building itself, so if there's anything that, you know, a leaky tank on a car or, or vehicle inside-
Well, I'm talking about the building, Carlos, I'm talking about the parking lot-
Okay.
Where cars park.
Yes, so, when you have car parked here, the, the design takes into consideration, that's why our basin is set back from the actual parking lot, this whole grass strip is what becomes the filter for any, any contaminants, any suspended solids, and that's allowed by regulation.
Yeah, suspended, but oil floats to the top, oil and gas. Is there any provisions to catch that?
Yes, there will be, at the catch basin, there will be a hood for the catch, at the catch basin end, and again, any of the soil, the soil would, would grab some of that oil too, if, if, because it does float, but when water goes away, then it gets trapped in that first layer of soil and, and grass.
Are we supposed to grab that oil before it gets onto a place that perks?
It depends on the design, that's why we, what this filter strip works for is to do that for us to-
Well, under the MS law, doesn't it require that you do something like that, so it doesn't get into?
So, we can go with a, what's called a, when you have a traditional system of catch basins and pipes and manholes, normally you would have a STCC, a, a drainage-
It's a recovery manhole?
Yeah, or, or a, a, what we call a storm scepter. It's like, when you say Kleenex, a storm scepter is a manufacturer, but it's the, the type of structure, so you can go with that in a typical system, but if you're doing a system where you're sheet flowing everything, basically, your area where you're trapping all those, anything that goes on is on that grass and on that cat, on that area of the infiltration and the filter that happens with the vegetation that gets grown here, and then, anything that gets all the way to the manhole, to the catch basin, it would be trapped by the hood and the some of the catch basin.
So, the town cannot get in trouble if there is a gas spill there and it goes out and contaminants that field there?
In, in, in event of a large gas spill, it's-
Over five gallons, yeah?
Mm-hmm.
It would be quiet?
The design is meant for removing any contaminants. If you have a big gas spill, you have to handle the gas spill that, you know, you cannot rely just on, on the grass for that, but that's, any system will be, like, if you were in the parking lot here with catch basins, if there's a big gas, you know, a, a large amount of gas that gets spilled, you would have to handle it on site.
I know, but I-
For small amounts of oil or gas that comes off of the vehicles, it, it, the filter strip on, on the actual grass is what basically filters all that, and then the-
Now, what kind of filter, what's that filter strip made of?
It's the grass, it's grass and soil, so that's how, and, and that's how you do systems that are above ground and not go underground, don't go into catch basins. When you're trying to do sheet flowing through a site, that's, that's how we do it.
So, there is no way, because of the elevation, because of the invert elevation where the stormwater goes into, it's basically impossible to put manholes anywhere on that site to do that?
Because you would, yeah, you would end up at such a lower elevation that then, it would be really hard to hit our, our overflow at the end.
Well, what I, what, also, what I'm saying is, say if there was a spill there, we have made other businesses put in the stormwater separator-
Yeah, an STCC, yeah.
Separates oils and gases from the water. I can't believe in my head that grass is a filter.
But it, it is, and the regulations allows you to have-
Does that satisfy DEP and EP?
Yes, yeah, and, and obviously, the third-party engineer would have commented if he felt that this wasn't needed.
Well, I'm asking that of you, because I don't know that answer, so.
Yes, so the filter strip, and it's what grabs any sort of, and the solids, any oils, and, and grabs them before it goes into the basin itself. The basin is also vegetated, so any oils also could grab there, and then, at the end, you would have a hood at your catch basin, so if, of any oils that go in there. And it is a DEP-accepted method of, of handling a parking lot.
I've, I've got a question.
Yes.
In the past, the planning board did not allow anyone to drain into the town drainage system. Do you have an exemption?
No, not at all, it's, it, it was, it's allowed, there are areas in-
It was a town law that we were told by previous building, uh, superintendents of the highway, that no hook, no drainage would go into the town drainage system. Now, do we have an exemption to allow this particular building to go into the town drainage system?
So, again, I, I, because this was vetted between our engineers and the highway, highway soup or the DPW.
We have a new, we have a new DPW guy, so I assume the selectmen made that decision way back when. I would like to see something in writing that authorizes the drainage system, and are we going to treat the town differently than we're going to treat private buildings?
No, it would be exactly the same, actually, our engineers-
No, no, that's our question. We don't allow a private, if, if this was Joe's small company, they wouldn't put it into the town system.
It's, as, as I understand, and my engineer's going to be out with the city, the town engineer on Thursday out on site to review everything, our understanding is that he was, he allowed this design?
Well, he, he's very new at the job, I think this is, this is, this decision is above his pay grade.
This is the board of selectmen.
I think the board of selectmen's going to have to make that decision. Now, if they, if they, if they make the decision to exempt the town, that kind of bothers me a little bit, because when we, when the federal government exempts themselves, like, for healthcare, we get upset.
Yeah, I understand.
So, I think as a business person coming in, they may get upset too, that we are looking for a special exemption for the town, and so, I think, Joyce, that's something I think the select board's going to have to make a decision on. Do we allow exemption for town building to hook into the drainage system, and do we allow all businesses to hook into the drainage system?
I, so, and I just wanted to, just, the only thing I wanted to add is as-
What we're looking for is a letter, I'm looking for a letter to say that, that would be authorized.
All right, I can give you some information on that. I met with the TPW director on two different occasions.
Okay.
He says he has no problem at all, a town entity going into a town stormwater system.
Well, that's-
But, he says, I cannot tell you, it's probably yes, but until he meets with the engineer off the project, okay, the size of the pipe or the handle it and everything else, then he will give his, because I asked him to email us his thoughts today, but he said, I can't until he meets.
This week.
Well, I, I think Jim is right, that's above his pay grade to make that decision. You on the job, I think it's the select board's decision to make that, that determination, because I know we're going to get some grief when private developers come in and want to hook into, many of them do, and we said not allowed, so.
And I just wanted to add two things, one is that I, my understanding was that any project on Russell on, on Route 9, because the catch basins are on a state highway, they don't allow you to connect to those-
They do not, correct.
And that's in Route, in Route 9, period.
That's correct.
But, but my understanding was that outside of Route 9, and with this project, and the way that it is designed, that it was allowed, but they will be discussed with the engineer and the city, uh, town engineer on Thursday.
You know what happens when they say assume?
Yes, but I just wanted to make sure that I knew about the Russell, because we, when you put, pointed this out last time, I definitely did all our homework and looked into it.
Yeah, the state doesn't allow it, so we have to be cognizant that we're going to exempt, well, okay.
Well, just from Russell Street, outside, it seemed, again, I don't, I, I will wait for the engineer and the engineer to talk together and-
Okay.
And figure it out. My understanding is that they could, but-
Don't you have to, excuse me for a moment, do you have to take into consideration of being a business or not a business also?
Business or non-business? Nobody's allowed to tie into a, to, to, we'd allow nobody to tie into a town water, town drainage system, public, private, or otherwise.
Because we've been told that is the policy.
Right.
It's your policy.
Right. So, an individual can't do it, a business can't do it.
You have to put language in here too, about that, about the drainage and true to order health of this.
So, okay.
I, I think, utility-wise, I've, I've ran everything that I have here for utilities. I don't see anything else that I can give you more detail. In general, the, the site is, I mean, it's very simple in the sense that it's a flat site and, and two entrances, a parking lot and a building, that's basically what we have here.
Okay, from it, there's, Jim, you have any questions? I don't want-
Whoa, whoa, we got a ton of questions.
I know, okay.
You can type in my name?
Yes.
If you haven't seen, um, the building itself, as far as the exterior appearances, we have renderings for you to look at, and colors to, there's been reviews by the committee. So, this is view, I believe, looking from the northeast. And it's a 5,400 square foot building, thereabouts, about 3,000 square feet in the apparatus and about 2,000 square feet in the office.
What's the back look like? You got big doors in the back?
Uh, yeah, one, one same, same as the front one, is that what that?
So, give me those numbers again.
Um, roughly 5,400 square feet for the building, about 3,000 in the apparatus, 2,000 in the office, and there's like 900 square foot utility necessary.
You will get these numbers on the revised, on these revised plans, that have the table, was one of the comments that the third-party engineer asked, and we added those two.
So, when the, when the fire trucks return, do they have to back in, or can they drive around and drive it? That one.
Yeah, and, actually, these are tables. There is one bay that is accessed, can be accessed from the back, the second bay cannot be accessed from the back, so that, if you wanted to bring in a vehicle in there, depending on how you arrange it, you might be able to go through and then back up, but if it was, if this lane was totally blocked, at that point, yes, somebody would have to then back up to come into the, to the, to the apparatus bay, they would have to back up, so that they would be facing forward when they come out. But one of the bays has, it's a drive, a totally drive-through.
Who picked the spot exactly where this thing is sitting on this lane?
Wait, give us, give us a, give us a chance, let him, let him make the presentation.
I think, I mean, I will start with the site, and any questions I will just, I can handle now, so.
So, the building's wood frame, it's cement board siding and stainless steel metal roof. There is an alternative, prices can make you light, you won't have to ask for a string roof. The colors are basically, as you can see, sort of maroon, fire station red, there's a couple of shades of gray, and there's white trim involved, so we have a little bit of all these colors here, a little bit of this above and below, and the roof's, the roof's siding color, I'm sorry, the roof, shade color is a pretty good match for the top we go with. So, that's the-
John, what's the picture in this roof?
Six and 12.
Six and 12. What is that?
Six and 12.
Six and 12.
And there's a coupla on there too, that will have a wider, and you saw the photometrics, or photometrics for part of this, we'll put you the photometrics in.
We don't want those, they're being away, we'll lose them, we'll extract away for nothing, thank you.
Okay.
This is, this is a better picture, if, just, if you wanted to talk about site and siding. It shows the overall of the whole, whole parcel.
As far as the general drainage and stuff like that, utilities, you know, I don't have any real comments on that, but I'm kind of, I would have thought this would have gone back to town meeting, because for town meeting vote on this, they voted to buy the parcel, they voted to put the station there, and no other information went to town. they voted to buy the parcel, they voted to put a station there, and no other information went to town meeting to tell people about what it would look like. Um, so, okay, so the planning board, it's not gonna go back to town meeting, the planning board is going to be very scrutinizing of this project. I don't claim, I don't, the planning board is not against by any means the fire station in this area. You know, it's a probably good idea, probably necessity, all those things. However, I think the layout of this parcel is extremely poor. Coming from driving big trucks, that fire station entrance exit of the main road, that one on two forty-seven, and then having to make a right-hand turn and then a left-hand turn onto Stockbridge Street that is not at a ninety-degree intersection is a disaster. That fire station should be moved down so that the entrance is directly in line with Stockbridge Street. I don't know who's the person that located where it is, but that's just bad. Um, an S-turn coming out of a driveway on the left-hand side? Why is there an S-turn coming out of the driveway?
Meaning?
That S-turn, why is there an S-turn?
So that we could have the, uh, that driveway to be totally opposite with the Stockbridge Road.
Why isn't the main exit not in line with Stockbridge Road?
So, the logic of this is safety, meaning a fire truck as it, it comes out, in this case, will be, there's two, two safety reasons that, that I can, uh, quote. One of them being that there is a turn right in here. There is a much straighter line on, on, from north to south than from south to north, so.
Is, is, isn't there plans to put, wouldn't there be, shouldn't, shouldn't there be plans to put a signalized light at Stockbridge entrance where the fire truck comes out, all traffic stops?
Eventually, there's gotta be a light there.
Across the intersection?
No, we, we haven't proposed a, a light.
That's ridiculous. Who, who's, who's, whose idea is it not to put a signalized light there?
Because the amount of traffic that you're gonna be getting into this road, that is, for, you mean for this?
Yeah.
There has.
So even, even with that main entrance, there's no light to shut any traffic off?
I just wanna back up maybe two steps.
Am I beating on the wrong person for this?
No, no, I, I can, I can let you.
Beat on him anyway.
Yes, beat on me, I'm here for that.
Carlos likes that.
Yes, um, the, again, I just wanted to point out that if a fire truck is exiting here, he's, has to deal with both traffic to and from the north, south, and also from Stockbridge Road. Also, there is a turn or a curve that happens here. So, we, as a committee and as a designer, we thought that this was a better location as the person, as the fire truck as it comes out, the only two areas that he's gonna be paying more attention will be north and south. And he wouldn't have to have that extra line of traffic coming in. Also, the sight lines are extremely much longer on that side, on the north side than on the south side. So at eight hundred feet, we have basically a straight shot into the entrance. Um, from, from the opposite side at eight hundred feet, you're, you're still, you know, you're still on the curve as you come around. So, and these are some of the pictures of how it, what it looks like as you come around. Even though the site is very open, it's still, as you're driving, you're looking this way. As you're driving down, you're not necessarily all gonna be here looking at what's going on with the fire station. But if, once you are beyond this point, about four hundred fifty feet, you have a straight shot at the, this entrance while you will be about two hundred feet uh, by the time you could actually have a very clear shot of, of, uh, the secondary entrance.
Carlos, I hate to interrupt, but Jim is right. That intersection is gonna have a light and to, to assume that is gonna be the only building there. There is gonna be something. There's gonna be a DPW ER, there's gonna be something. So, you have to treat this as a proposed subdivision. You're looking into just like, this is the only building that's gonna be there. I don't, I don't think we, you're planning ahead or, I hate to say that we have to be the authority to make it plan ahead. That road should be like a subdivision road, should have the utilities go in there and so that you can have other buildings.
What we have the utilities.
Those buildings, those trucks, let's say they're DPW ER, that's probably the next thing I can see on site. But they're gonna be coming out of that entrance and they're gonna be facing the same traffic too, uh, of sight lining. So you're gonna need a light there eventually. And I concur with Jim. To put that right in the middle of the parcel, it's not, it's like, it's our whole parcel and we can do what we want. We have to plan as, as a mall would plan. You're gonna have further development in there.
The idea is that this driveway could either continue this way so that they would have access to the back or could access this way?
Carlos, if it's gonna continue that way, why don't you put the water main there? Why don't you put the sewer main there as a subdivision entrance to a mall or to a subdivision?
And we, and we did that. It's, it's all stopped up at the back of our, of our fire station.
But it's not where one would ordinarily see it on a road. It's within your.
Well, we, basically what we've done is we've brought in a, a water main into our site that then splits into our building and then keeps going back so that there will be access for any type of use that happens from the back.
The use is gonna be off your building. It should be.
And the two electric are also going back to the back also in that same sense.
So the sewer, so the sewer and the water will go, not on the road, it'll be right next to the building.
They go, um, right, the, the water itself is going through the parking lot and ends up at a hydrant right at the back of the parking.
My assumption is it's gonna go even further. If we extend that road to the back, that's where you have your retention pond. So, what are we gonna do?
No, the idea is that you could, basically, the idea is that you can go by the retention pond, no problem. I mean, either this way or you could go this.
If you go straight from Stockbridge Road, looks like it, you're gonna go right?
No, but, I mean, I have another drawing that had to, you know, you can extend this straight, straight up.
Well, it looks like it, to me, it goes right where the pond is, but.
So this is our pond, so it literally will go right next to.
What's, what's the, the check-in line for?
Check-in line just shows what our remaining, uh, developable area within the site is. Just showing, um, how many acres we're using on one side, how many acres will be left on, on the other side.
Well, you got some on both sides too, that's okay.
There is, uh, again, a, uh, elevation right now, a, a knoll in that area and even if we.
A holdover, an eight hours of work and clearing that sand out in no time.
Yes.
It's not like it's rock.
Yeah.
If, if, if we would still have this entrance that we moved the whole, um, building to the right, you really are not gaining a lot of space.
I'm talking of moving the building to the left so that the, the driveway can come straight out of the fire station right onto Stockbridge Road.
Again, the, and.
And, and you put a light at the intersection, so. Just, just for clarity, going forward, there's a tape and everything, you're talking about the driveway to the equipment bay, not the driveway to the park here.
Just the driveway to the equipment bay.
You would like to.
That is a poor design from a truck-driving point of view.
And, and again, the, the thought of it was to have a direct connection to, um, river road. Having only traffic from north and south and not having a, a third, uh, line of traffic coming in as a fire truck was trying to go out.
As far as I'm concerned, on that site, north and south, regardless where that station is on that parcel. I went there before this meeting in the ice site. It's way by the bowels, you can see right down to the corner.
Yes, and.
And I saw, if you move the, if that movement in the build further, your line would change from where the car sits to the Stockbridge Road site. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, and, and.
So wherever that, the way I seen that night, just pictured where that station would sit. As far as I'm concerned, a truck is safer going straight than making all these zigzags.
Going straight.
Right.
Straight across to the.
To, to the Stockbridge.
You know, even the light after I, I met with Mark Donald, he's a traffic engineer. I also went to see the traffic engineer with the OP, right? And one thing Mark Donald said, you got emergency vehicles coming out of a site with lights. It's just like you see a police cruiser with lights. That's a big caution sign right there. That's only activated on a truck when they are responded. Ambulance, fire, and rescue all have lights.
So I, I think Mark, Mark was talking about two things. First of all, that he felt that the light, an actual light that would stop the traffic as a fire truck would come out wasn't necessarily because as the fire truck comes out, especially in this area instead of in the more busy intersection, that there will be clear sight of those, of those lights. That's one of the things that Mark was saying, that that would identify that there was an emergency. He did not think that it was detrimental to have a, a light there, but he didn't think it was necessary.
Right.
Um, it's, so that was.
It just makes it more safer.
For sure.
There's no question about that.
Would, would it be, um, yeah, I, I don't think it would take away from safety to have a light. I mean, obviously.
Here we go again. We're gonna, we're looking at this. How much money are we gonna add doing this? And if this did get in trouble down the road, you know, a traffic light sitting there with the station over here, if that's activated, they stop the traffic and then, then the truck's gonna go all around and makes matters worse. You know what I'm saying? If a traffic light was at the intersection, at that site, it is. It wouldn't work well because it would stop the traffic. You'd have to have another light.
Up the road.
North of the apparatus road exit versus just one light.
And that's the issue with having the four, you know, one, two, three, four with the emergency vehicles coming out. It makes it.
And then, here's the dangerous thing, just coming back in. You gotta drive up either north, if you're coming back from Stockbridge, or from the south. You gotta drive to the north on a road, stop in the middle of the road, and back up. And there's some kind of, um, I was talking to Mike Mason about it, about how many accidents are caused by backing up in the middle of the road.
I think, and again, many towns don't allow you to back up off of the driveway because obviously when you're backing off of a driveway, you're.
Well, one way, Carlos, and I talked to you today about it.
Yeah.
It's the same loop they put on the sitter station.
On the next area.
Right. They, they drive in and loop around and they're off the highway. And they, they got plenty of room to back in that station. And again, if the.
And that would be a possibility of something that could happen in here.
But we got, because the layout and the elevation of that land, it's the drainage. You can't put it in no catch basin because that's all you're handling, there's sheer runoff on this whole project. So you're kind of, you're kind of screwed either pushing that building to the north.
To the north is, is really not the, as we keep pushing that building to the north, we're gonna have issues with drainage and.
You go to the south easier than the north.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Excuse me, as far as where the developable land is on this property, and you have to see our site on that larger overall site. But between the resource and the waterfront district, the waterfront setbacks, there is, uh, much narrower land onto the north and much more available land to the south, which is where we're trying to maximize future town use. If the building were to slide to the south in front of Stockbridge and we were going to put and have to push the, uh, retention area to the south because that's the natural flow of water, then we would be.
Leaving the set.
Lessening and, and restricting the use of the, of the larger southern side of the property.
You know, and again, and, and I think, you know, visually, it seems like it's right in the middle, but our building is really here. This is our, again, a multi-use entrance that we could use for accessing then the back of the site. Also, this is how we brought all our utilities in. From this point to, from here to here, um, yeah, there is a, and you could flatten it out. One of the issues would be that then what do we do with all, all that dirt that we need to handle on site?
I think if you get rid of that.
And then.
There's plenty of people that would take that dirt.
Right, that's not, that's not.
That's not an issue, yeah.
Okay, and as I mentioned before, one of the issues we have with the soils is that there is a study, it is, has contaminants from the past agricultural use, so we can't.
Not that area. That has really not been farmed.
With the back part, with the knoll, that's just sand.
Yes, it's farmed and went down this way.
Nobody's farmed that for.
And we were, but we've been required for any soils that are from the site, if we were to take them out, they didn't need to be disposed in a special way.
Did you test that entire, entire?
I, I, we were not the ones responsible for that. My assumption was the whole site.
The footprint of the building. I should say the footprint of our construction zone.
The whole site of the project, the land, all the, the whole.
This is what was tested. The footprint of our construction zone is what we tested.
Okay, that's right. That's, that's, that's the part. That's understandable. What you did with, with the knoll is just sand.
Okay.
It's probably pretty clean.
You didn't test the knoll?
We didn't test the knoll, uh, but I wouldn't, anyways, it might not be clean.
What, what, what contaminants were there?
Uh, pesticides, herbicides. I don't have the report with me, but I can provide the.
Yeah, would you please?
Yeah.
Who actually picked that site?
I think it was, you know, with the committee.
No, I don't wanna think. I wanna know who was it, was it?
Well.
Fire chief, the committee, or that guy sitting there?
Would it be possible for me to?
Sure.
Yeah. So, just a little history. Um, so August twenty-ninth of seventeen, when we passed over the article, that's only was fifty-five hundred dollars that was put into Fire Department budget to actually review the site, to make sure it was conducive for this. Uh, they actually did a review of the site, a general review, before they started doing warnings and everything. And it was found that the location we're excited right now was the best possible site for it because the soil, the reason why we, I have a different view on how the trucks come out onto the, onto Route forty-seven. It's, it's my opinion as a fire chief and as a person who's driven these fire trucks for a long time, that we like to have them come to the end of the driveway, stop and look in all directions. Not have the potential of a green light if we're putting a light at Stockbridge where we're accessing it there. We have people that drive through green lights, red lights all the time. So the point why I personally think it's better to have them stop, they can look north, south, and then they can also see the traffic coming off of Stockbridge. That was the purpose of that location. It was also a buffer for the neighbors, so we have big shiny flashy trucks with headlights on them. We didn't wanna be directly across from our neighbors on the east side. So if we were gonna put that driveway directly across from Stockbridge, that could potentially impact, uh, our neighbors. So we were trying to be good neighbors and not have that. As far as turning the building, there was a discussion about that. We would be impacting our, our neighbor to the south potentially with lights coming out the, if we aimed the building in a different direction. As far as the turn onto Stockbridge Street for our ladder truck or anything else, it's a pretty wide, it's a pretty wide, uh, intersection. And all of our. What's that?
You're saying it's easy turn, but no, no track trail or firm or what's sitting at the edge of the stock bridge road.
If, no, if there was, if there was a vehicle parked, I mean, the, they're supposed, I mean, obviously, they're supposed to be pulling over anyways for emergency vehicles. But, uh, my opinion is there's ample room for even our ladder truck. We've taken turns there before. Um, even with cars there, we do the, we've done the tractor parade.
Yes, I just, we did, after a conversation, we did that, that exact same, yes, there's plenty of room. Actually put a car way past the stop line if you look at the aerial image. Um, and yes, the apparatus should be more than, more, very free to go all the way around and make that left. Even if you had a vehicle right here.
What is safer, going straight or going around?
Well, literally, they wouldn't even have to go around. They would just make the left.
Well, that's not going straight.
No, no, I understand.
A hard left.
We would be taking a hard left or a hard right if we were coming out. So we would be taking a hard left and a hard right coming out of the.
If you were north or south.
If we were coming out of that area across from Stockbridge.
Look, if Stockbridge wasn't there, I wouldn't be saying a damn thing about this. But Stockbridge is there. So the, so in other words, the, the committee, what I understand here, the committee is the one that picked the site where it's gonna be?
We had input too, like all the information that I've been, I've been talking about, traffic, direction. Um, we started with the notion that we were gonna be against, you know, right across from Stockbridge Road with the public access. Um, and then the, basically, the, the design develops also that we didn't wanna have this here, so the design developed from there.
Well, as Frank said, the lights. Well, as Frank said, the lights, the neighbor to the south on the corner of 47 Stockbridge is gonna get a bigger amount because when the light swings its headlights, everything, not only once, coming out and then swing into the left, you swing through the whole house again. You've got it twice.
Johnny, can I say something? Hi, Matt Dager. At every evening, the lights come into the house. That is not a problem. And when you talk about a fire truck can't take the curb, there's trailer trucks that come down the road and they come and they take the curb on Stockbridge. Plus, the people who work across, in the summertime, I see some of the Spanish people take a big truck with boxes on the back. They come right down where the fire station would be and they would take a right and then a left. And I've been there since 2001 and there's never been a problem. So I'm, you can take it both ways. I can't say that there won't be an accident one day. Every place is like that.
That was the emergency button.
I do have driven trucks, all kinds of trucks, except trailer trucks because they've been in the middle. And, um, if you think about it, the guys in, in the truck, you're all amped up and you're leaving the station. To make him stop, him or her, to look both ways is a much safer deal than just, you know, pull out and you get into that bad habit and say, I got the right of way, just go. You don't have the right of way. You have to stop. So I think, I think the, where it's, where it's put now is probably for the best use of everything. I didn't in the beginning, but the more I thought about it, I came around to seeing the point of view.
Say what?
The more I thought about it, the more I came to see the point of view. Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay.
If I can't hear you, I'm gonna tell you I can.
I know. Well, I'm gonna speak up good and loud so you can hear me.
Good. Not just for us, it's for the people that are watching this to make it new too.
I'm sure they've heard me.
I'm thinking of the future. Uh, that, that road where the people are gonna drive in, the call, that's 24 feet with not a turning radius for big trucks or anything going in there.
The beast, the turning radiuses?
Yeah.
They're over 20 feet.
So the, the...
Yeah.
Blacktop is gonna be 24 feet?
Yeah, 20, 24 feet. Uh, the width of the, of the road is 24 feet, then you have, you know, 20, 20 foot radius for the two radius on either side.
You expect you've got a cross section of what the, uh, the road's gonna look like? How many, how much gravel?
Yes, of course. Yes, that's a deepness.
You don't have to get it out.
Okay. Yeah, and there, this is actually reinforced so that you can bring in the truck and go all the way through. And we looked at the turning radius of bringing in the truck all the way through and it can easily make that curve, a turn from either side to go all the way around.
But once again, I, I still don't see how, where the water main is going and the sewer is going, that it's gonna allow for expansion on that site. Think of, think of, put your thinking cap on that. You're gonna develop that. You own that whole...
We've had that thinking cap for, for months.
You own, you own that parcel and you're gonna, and you're gonna put some other buildings there.
And again, they can, it can veer off from that. Uh, fire hydrant all the way here.
So the fire hydrant and the sewer are gonna be...
The fire hydrant, we've used as a basically a tap so that we can end that main.
Eight inch?
Yes.
Eight inch. And the sewer hookup is going to be...
And then we have a sewer hookup, a cat manual right there.
Okay.
So we can hook up, I, I don't see the limitations. And we've brought all, all the utilities to the back of the property. Um, you know, if we were to bring him, to bring him through here and bring him back here in for the future use and then having to have this very long connection to the building didn't make any sense. So for us, it was much more efficient to bring him directly through next to the building and take it all the way to the back so that we could use the mass, best use of the, of, for this part of the project and not have to have a very long, you know, main just because.
I know. It's a, it's a public safety concern and if this were a, a mall or subdivision going in, we would never allow two, two road cuts right there, right next to each other.
Yeah.
So this is unique. Uh, I, I agree. But...
And a lot of the, you know, if we, if we look at, there are a lot of examples of fire stations that have this, you know, directly to a road, um, instead of having to go through or...
The center station has three, right? It's got the apparatus, it's got the north parking and it's got the police parking.
Yeah, and it's important to separate those two because you don't want to have any conflict between the emergency vehicle going out and then the public entrance.
I understand the necessity for, for two curbs there. Don't doubt about that.
Yeah.
You can't have one for fire station.
No, it would be crazy.
In far as, far as the sewer and water, Joe, sewer can be put anywhere. If it doesn't need to grade, it can be by injection pump and pump it uphill, downhill, whatever. Water, water's all under pressure. So it's, 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 it can be tapped off right to the south and go anywhere on the property there. So that's not an argument or a thing to really find something up here for the, for the future. That's a...
Is the building gonna be sprinkled?
Yes.
Is it? Is it required? You're from building that small?
No, it's not required. It's, uh, it's...
It's not required, but we wanted to...
The hazards that are inside of it, but yes.
It's just common sense. Let's make all that kind of money on a building like that non-sprinkled.
It's stupid.
And the fire station would be...
A fire station I visited in Worcester County, this was the chief said, he, they were gonna build this with no sprinkle system in it. But look at the amount of equipment, the money you have in that. And that, and fire stations do catch fire and burn from the trucks, something shorts out, burns everything, burnt with a sprinkle system, it stops everything. A hundred percent a sprinkle system in it.
So I'm hearing the rationale for having the driveway, apparatus driveway offset. But if that's the rationale for the apparatus driveway, then why is the access driveway not likewise?
The idea was to have that then opposite to Stockbridge Road so that you would have a nice intersection for that. Uh, because it's for public use, not emergency use.
What's the difference?
Well, the emergency use, you don't want any traffic, any conflict or anything coming out of it. You know, you just wanna be able to look both, both ways and go. Where again, we talked about that if you come out on this side, you have Stockbridge Road and then you have also traffic from both, both, or the other side. So it's not as, as an easy exit as it will be from the other, from this corner.
I'm just getting, I'm...
And, and normally in design...
You're creating a four-way intersection where there was only a three-way intersection. You're gonna have people now trying to drive across two lanes of traffic.
If we added a, uh, offset to, to the side, then we create even more conflict on that intersection because you have the three and then another curb cut right, right off of it.
No, I'm just saying have two, have, just come straight down from the parking area.
So do this?
Yes.
Again, the, the idea was to bring that, uh, entrance right to Stockbridge Road. So in future uses, you could, it would be a straight line that you could access then the back of the property without having to go through the fire station.
How many trips per week do you anticipate?
I think we've left that for the chief. He gave us some information.
We estimated three, three trips a week.
Three trips a week.
I wasn't asking...
Let's just assume that the DPW yard goes back there, talking 50 trips a day. So what would, so we're building this, I think we're a little short-sighted. We're building this for just the fire station, but we have to think about the whole, the whole parcel.
Our, our charge when we did this project, our charge this project...
I, I realize.
Was to design our building and maximize, you know, designer building correctly and on a budget and maximize the available land for, so it's flexible for all the uses. We don't know what those other uses would be. So in our charge to do this design, we didn't wanna do any damage to any future use. Take care of our use and then make it, provide the features that would supplement a future use, but not build that future use yet because we still don't know what it is.
Well, exactly right. I heard, it's just what I anticipated. It's me, me, me. And unfortunately, we're put in a position of helping the site and, uh, we don't know what the site's gonna be, but we do have the plans for the future.
I don't think I said it was just me, me, me. We were going to design our particular site in a way that maximized the use for the town, for the other area of the site, give the maximum amount of area available so the town would have flexibility in that future use. Then, as we built our particular facility or designed our particular facility, we would do, we would do no damage to creating any of the future use. We would stay out of their way. We would provide amenities if they were feasible.
Utilities.
I just have one, one comment to that. If I've heard a question once, I've heard it probably 15, 20 times. Why are they putting something right in the middle of the parcel? When if you think about expansion, you could go, you know, north or south, but, uh, that's...
When we, when we first went, and I have to disagree with you, Jim, about taking this project back to town meeting. Number one, when we went to town meeting and we wanted to buy this piece of partial because the other piece in the other center of North Hadley was not gonna work for the fire station. So we needed another piece of property. This property became available. There's extra land there. We're maximizing the best that we can by putting the fire station where it is. It was the building committee, also the municipal building committee that also chimed in on it, that this was the best spot for this fire station to go so that for future use. And we haven't even talked about, wait a minute, we haven't even talked about what our future use is going to be for that property. So our, our goal was to get someplace where we could put a sub-fire station in North Hadley. So that was our charge and that was our goal.
Was there no question that we knew the fire station was going to go here if we purchased it? That wasn't my comment.
Correct.
My, my comment was that the town has never seen the layout of the fire station on the parcel. Every other project...
But that was the charge of the building committee to do that.
Every other, every other building project we have ever done in town in the last 30 years, the town has seen where and approximately what the building would look like.
We did have a, we did have a public session with, with that.
Town meeting. I'm saying town meeting. The town meetings have never seen this project as it sits.
No.
That's my comment.
But why, why would they have to?
So they know what they're getting.
But they are know what they're getting. We had an X amount of money that we were told that we could expend on a project.
That's my opinion. I disagree. The town doesn't know what they're getting.
Well, I think it's gonna be a nice building.
That's it was a like...
And it's gonna be functional.
Somebody's saying the town doesn't know what they're getting.
Can I just ask a question on that? Just so I can clarify in my head. When you say the town doesn't know what they're getting as far as the building or...
As far as the project appears itself, layout, what it looks like.
Because the building is exactly the same as what it was gonna be on the Ballfield site and there's absolutely nothing different about that structure, even the exterior elevations. So it's just the site and...
Right. And then that's my comment. The town doesn't know what it's getting on the site.
But we're still trying to maximize the whole use of the piece of property for future use, even though we don't have any plans for it right now. We have enough on our plate with three projects going on.
Get back to why you couldn't, what would happen if you moved, why couldn't we move further north so that we...
Moving it further north right now, we are really at the max of what our sewer system could allow. At that point, we would need to definitely pump it and we were trying to avoid that. If we move the building east to the, uh, further to the north, we would still need to have our retention or detention pond in the same location because we're limited by what our overflow would be. If we were have, we would have to have it further down, then we would have to actually start trying to drain to the back of the property, which we really didn't wanna do. Um, because it's, first of all, it uses more, more of the land and then you're going into resource area and we really didn't wanna go that route, route. Um, the other, we also left a certain amount of space so that there was some buffer between this use and the use next door. Uh, but the utilities in particular are gonna be, are gonna be limiting. Um, because if we move this farther north, we are farther away from sewer and drainage.
From the edge of that building, old building to that property lane, straight across and in due north, there's roughly 200 feet there.
180 feet, yeah.
From that point to the edge of the S turn, there's another 200 feet. And then from there to the southerly border, just 340 feet, right? The biggest part of moving that all the way to the north is the drainage, to catch all the drainage and to get rid of it.
Also, again, and we're stretching it out. So we would leave, we would have to leave, even if we move this farther to the north, we would need to have our detention pond in the location where it is so that we can actually...
Can that be moved slightly to the north too?
As, no, because then, then we are, we're hitting, we're really right at, we're a 1% slope on this pipe, overflow pipe. And if we keep moving it, we would, and, and we are at the surface. We have a, a head wall, uh, instead of a catch basin for our overflow. We are right at the surface. So the further we move it, the harder it's gonna be to hit that overflow on the, on the catch basin.
And to the south?
To the south, it will be the opposite. If we move this to the south, we're get closer then to, um, to these. Uh, but again, it, starting with the fact that we wanted to have a, again, a, a clean intersection that had that, um, public use right across from Stockbridge Road. If we flip this the whole way, then you have all the other issues that we've talked about before in regards to having the building right, um, the apparatus bay right across from the other building and, and any of those issues. Again, and we're bringing in utilities. We have a driveway that can be used as a driveway that could go all the way through or it could be going through here. There could be another curb cut here if you needed to. I don't think we've limited the use of the rest of the parcel. There is all this resource area on the back so that we can't really use this part of the parcel anyway. So the best, now we've left all this open space there for any future use.
Well, Carlos, I just have one comment. In other words, you have 340 feet for, like John was mentioning, right there, 340 feet. Uh, if you had 350 feet, you'd have two building lots you could sell if you wanted to make all the money back for the town. So it's just a little aside.
Why would you wanna sell?
But they've, nobody assigned us...
I'm just throwing that out.
But nobody asked us to do that. So if we would have known, we, I would have cut the parcel so we would have front, all the frontages. Yeah, I mean, I never had, if, if that was asked, I, we would do it. I mean, we would not, not do it if we were asked.
My, my take on far as going to town meeting, I, I don't think that's really necessary because the plans when I proposed this along with the fire chief were identical to that. The only thing, and here's the plan, by virtue of design, the only, you take that S off and go straight. This plan that was accepted and we shook, yeah, we showed everything to the taxpayers at the town meeting. They voted for that plan. That plan and this plan are identical, but that little S, that's the only difference in that. And the land was bought for a specific municipal use. The selectmen, along with the municipal building committee, set public safety and fire priority number one. So it had priority number one of that property. The, the best use and staying for the town is that what the selectmen set along with the municipal building. I still, in really my mind, I can't really totally accept that apparatus. And I mean, I went to even the North Tampa Fire Chief with this plan. I've said it because they got a light on five and 10 activated by the fire trucks inside and out. And I says, if you didn't have the light there, how would this be? He says it would be total disaster, total disaster going on there. Of course, this road would never hold up the five and 10 traffic.
Yeah, the stop traffic on five and 10 is what really requires that because if you have a light and five and 10, there's so much traffic, you could have cars being basically right in front of, of, of the entrance, you know, right here.
Even if that building was pushed a little bit to the north or all the way to the south and developed the north, the drainage is gonna be an issue on this whole parcel. There's no drainage at all going from this site to the back, to the, to the west, right?
There's, there's, it, there's a low point right, right back here.
Is there any water in that whole parcel that goes to the west?
There is, basically, this is our low point, this contour right here, and there is a section here that starts to drain into that area, so.
How big is the developed parcel?
The, what?
How big is this parcel in dotted line?
In dotted line, we're talking about approximately four acres, a little over four acres, what I'm showing in the dotted line, and I'm going off of the setbacks.
Okay.
Anything that's really developable, not, you know, I could have gone all the way to the edges, but I really wanted to make sure that we were not, you know, showing that we were here.
So we can allocate, Carlos, that building could be moved to the south, and there still could be another road for a DPW annex or whatever the town wants to do in figure.
If you were moving this...
Yeah, not going all the way to the property line. And if the way the building's laid out, you can't expand that building to the south. That building can only be expanded to the north.
Well, by bringing it here, you're, you're kind of, well, you would be limiting on anything that could happen on, on this side.
No, because you still, that land over there to develop right north of that, that's out of the, out of the buffer line, no, way up in the corner, right there.
That's wet back there, isn't it?
It, it starts to be wet back there also.
But is it non-buildable? For a driveway or anything on it?
Where's your plan with the resource lines?
Yeah, with the resource, also, once you're here, how are we meeting our utilities that are closer to the south?
Not having all that, we're talking about the road, or...
Okay, just...
Say if it was DPW, if they use that, all that extra land there.
This, this corner right here, I would, I would say that, that would be my, I mean, with having five, almost five acres of land here, I would not be seeking the one acre or a little amount of land that we have here, if we have all this land to use and to access through here. I, I really, to me, it doesn't make sense. And there's also, again, some landform here, so the natural landform is there. We have a huge tree on the back, I mean, and then you have the resource area extending to that corner. Again, I think the, the main developable area is all this.
The resource area in that line would have moved there, right?
The resource area, this is our...
Well, with your finger, right, that's, that's not anything beyond that you can develop. Is that correct or incorrect?
Yes, yeah, yeah, we, we could, we could develop it, yeah. I mean, this area right here, in theory, we, we could develop it. We are farther away from drainage and sewer and anything, all, the rest of our utilities. So it would be really hard to drain anything, for instance, to go back to here. We would start having issues, because we would need to drain into a resource area, and that requires more, much more work permits.
So the ballfields are out, then?
Again, I think the only reason why we had a ballfield at one point there was to show the size of the parcel, but...
Pardon?
Nothing is planned right now.
There was a...
There was a drawing, yes, that the municipal building committee...
That's correct.
Did show what could be possibly there and how much land is available, but it was not set in stone that that's what that was gonna be used for.
Okay, I would just like to make one, one comment regarding the ballfields, because that was presented to the CPA committee, I'm the planning board representative, that they wanted to put ballfields there. But I said, we already own the land at Hopkins, left field, right field, center field. So they went ahead and they have, they're gonna put more ballfields out there. So, so I'm glad that is not in conflict. That's all it does.
Well, me myself, I would rather see just a line like it, then, buildable future land, and don't throw no mud in the game, because that's exactly what you do. People start thinking, oh, no, I want ballfield, now what? And you get yourself a problem down the road.
Can I just make a point too, that you're talking about backing in? If you go about two miles up the road, you got Sunderland Fire Department, and they back in all the time. I spoke to the firefighters there, they don't drive around and drive through, they back in after a fires, and they have not had an issue on forty-seven with backing into their fire department garage. So I just wanted to point that out too, that, you know, we're on the same line as them, same traffic. So I just wanted to bring that out.
Pointing out another fact, why did they put a loop in our center station?
But they don't...
That was the right reason.
But they don't use it.
Just trucks that are off the road, no backing.
But they back in.
They drive a loop. Frankie, which way do you bring your...
Oh, oh, you're talking about our center station, oh, yeah. You back in or not?
We drive through the loop, which is also the driveway for the firefighters.
You're talking about the land that's north of the fires, the new substation. You've talked about the abutters to the south and to the, to the east, behind the abutter to the north, and that doesn't leave a whole lot of abutter. I mean, a whole lot of land between me and the station already. I'm, I'm going to hear the truck coming in and out the most.
You're a hundred and eighty feet, you're a hundred and eighty feet between, between your property and the station.
Right, but you're talking about, about moving it over to the north more.
No, it's what I said, it moves more, what's, there's always a complication if you do this or you do that.
We're talking, we're talking possibilities, what would happen here, what would happen here? Because we're just asking questions. And they're basically saying that moving it to the north is not, is not a good option because of all the problems that would occur with drainage.
Right, okay, all right.
Just so, Carlos, so everybody understands that, you know, you need to talk about it. So this is either why you do it or why you don't do it.
Right, okay, thank you.
One thing I didn't see on the site, is there any tower for communication on the site?
No, there's not, not in the plan, no.
Not at all?
No.
No.
What are you gonna do for radio communication?
We have a receiver to the north on the tower there.
Oh, across the, across the street.
The Gomber Road, right?
The Gomber Road, correct.
Okay.
If we were to at some point meet it, we have the previous tower that we have from Center Station that got changed out.
Are you still having that?
Yeah.
Really?
Don't throw it up in the way, town administrator.
Can you ever see putting that tower off in that site?
Not at this point, because we're actually looking at alternatives to that. We're looking at microwave versus, versus that, and it would be a much higher, higher level. It wouldn't be a tower.
Some of them are dealing with the new project here, whether they call it something like that.
Yeah, some new technology. We're looking at, at a mountain, not a tower.
Any other questions on the board? Anybody in the audience, have any questions or comments?
Play how your house is set up.
Yeah, my, my house is north of this station. The station seems to be closest to my house. I don't mind the station, we need the station, I'm proud of our fire, fire crew. But my house is an old, old farmhouse that is train car style, meaning every room is one width. You can look out, if you're standing in the middle of the room, you can look out the, the left side and the right side. It's not very wide rooms, they're what, maybe fourteen feet wide? And I have a lot of windows on the southern side, so, and on the other side. So you can see straight through my house, and there'll be cameras here. And my, I don't have a backyard. My, my whole yard, front yard and backyard, is my front yard which faces south. It doesn't face, well, River Drive, it faces south. So no matter what room I'm in, I'm looking that way, and all the noises come from that way. So I would, if it were this, this plot plan or whatever you call it, I would like to ask if they could put, instead of these three trees on the north side of the station, to be a row of arborvitae? And, and not the pencil arborvitae, but the regular arborvitae? Yeah, and to let them grow, you know, the tallest they could grow, just so I could have, not the noise as much and not the lights, the parking lot lights.
We have a pretty good screen going around the...
So one, one good thing is that there's literally a natural berm that's about six feet and almost three feet higher than the building, right in here. So if any views from this side, you do have this kind of knoll that's in here. In addition to having plantings, we've also already added some, you'll see on that, some, um, some, some other plantings too in here.
Right, but could that be the arborvitae going from the corner of the, um...
You just keep bringing it down?
From the corner of the garage to the end of the back parking lot?
She's mentioning is just bringing a row of arborvitae.
She's saying heading west, is that what you're...
Yes, heading west.
From the front corner of the building.
She's saying continuing, continue that run of arborvitae.
Oh, just keep it, no?
No, continue it west, so it...
Okay, west, so it goes all the way back.
So are you, are you fine with the three trees?
To the end of the parking lot.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The back end of the parking lot, like two, two back of the parking lot.
Totally, yeah, totally.
And I see if they extend the garage, so they would have to be moved, planted, so that they wouldn't interfere if you extended the garage. They wouldn't have to cut them down after they've grown up.
And then what we've done is, they can be dug out, so right now we have like four of them that would have to be dug out if, if the actual, but they can be dug out and replanted. But the idea was that we set back this line on them, far enough that it wouldn't be affected.
Yeah, so I, I would appreciate if they would at least...
Keep going up to the edge.
And, and not the pencil ones, and, and maybe like a seven or eight foot?
Yeah, I know the, the ones.
To be in with, to be planted?
Yep, I know the ones.
Depends on the cost of them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying yes, I'm just saying I understand, I understand your concern, the committee has to take care of it.
So just to get it straight, so we're just gonna continue a straight line?
Yeah, probably another five more arborvitae, just a straight line.
So, so to be...
Yeah.
Yeah, instead of the trees, because the trees will lose their leaf, but the arborvitae won't.
She was saying it's adding some... She's saying it's another thing.
On the back, on the...
Haven't pointed out, so...
So if you want, we, my understanding was that you wanted these to be extended all the way to the edge of the parking, and then these three, also you would like to not have trees?
Well, from, from the corner here, because this will, you're, you might build, so instead of having to put them here and they get cut out, you put them here.
I understand.
But start the arborvitae from here and go like to two past the, the, um... And, and these are fine, these are fine, but as long as the arborvitae started, you know, at the corner of the garage and back.
Okay.
Carlos, show the board.
So now, what she's explaining is to have arborvitae, instead of having these two trees, have a row of arborvitae that would stand, start with that second tree start, keep going back, and go all the way back to the end of the parking lot. So there would be a buffer all the way through.
Why don't, why don't you just set arborvitae further north to that scene?
Why don't you put the arborvitae on the north, they wouldn't have to be as tall?
Oh, for sure, and...
If the knoll, if, if you're saying the knoll is pretty much useless land?
Yeah, but that's pretty flat in front of her house, James.
Yeah, but if we put, but the arborvitae are, are just south of her house.
The knoll, you're gonna, on your house, the knoll is to your right.
Well, you have to look over the knoll to see the...
You can look straight ahead, that's fairly flat there, isn't it?
Right, right, yeah, when you look straight.
And the berm is, the knoll is right here.
You're right.
If you put, if you put the arborvitae on the north...
One, two, three, four, five, five to six feet?
Six feet. If you put the arborvitae on the north...
Compared to the edge of her house, yeah, it's about six, you know, five to six feet.
If you put the arborvitae on the knoll, you probably wouldn't need eight foot tall arborvitae. You could put four foot tall. And they're gonna grow bigger, but from the get-go, they're gonna be blocking the view.
Oh, yeah, yes.
You can't plant those trees on their trees existing trees.
Oh, yeah, and there's no exist, real existing trees up to, up to back here, there's a big, big...
But anyways, take, take a look at, instead of what's trying to design it, take a look at what's the best way to do it, and, you know, okay.
Yeah, no, I, I just wanted, I wanted her, the neighbor to understand her concern, so we could take it into consideration.
Just one more thing I'd like to add to that. I'm sure there's somebody who'll figure out where they're gonna put those trees, but I know if you're planning on a twenty-foot addition, and then you put the trees ten feet between the roots and the tree growing, pretty soon, they put that addition on, they'll be killing those trees. So I appreciate if they bring it far enough away from the station, so future they wouldn't hurt the trees if they put an addition on. We'd have to keep that in mind.
Yeah, and, and that's how we've been showing them right now. This is basically adult-sized tree, so of course, a tree would not be like that when we planted. And we've kept everything outside of the drift line of the tree, so that the edge of the possible new bay or extra bay would be outside of any of the root systems. So we, yeah, we've, we've accounted for that. We're trying to keep, keep the building away from those trees.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir? I'm the North Amherst representative on the building committee. I just wanted to thank the board for your consideration. And I hear that you're thinking very hard about this project. Obviously, I think it's a good project, much needed, given a lot of the new development in town, and density is going up off of Shattuck. And I hope that it is allowed. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, revised drawings of the plannings.
Yeah, I will, I brought today revised drawings from the comments that were done by the third party. So I have a, a full set of revised plans. Any other revisions I would have to bring in then, next time.
How far are you percentage-wise on your architectural...
We're at eighty-five percent.
How far are you on your architectural design?
Well, yeah, we're...
We're both at the same.
We submitted eighty-fives, and we're working a hundred percent right now.
Working a what?
A hundred percent, see these construction...
Oh, oh, construction progress?
Mm-hmm, construction.
They're between ninety and a hundred, basically.
Is, is there gonna, if there's any changes made to the site now or whenever the next meeting, or is there gonna be any additional cost for change orders if this happens?
I think that would be discussed.
Yeah.
What's that?
I think that would have to be discussed.
Well, we'll stop about it.
Well, it shouldn't be.
You know...
We'll leave the drawing, just the revised planning drawings.
Yeah. Would you, you would not like these today, we'll just wait and have a full revise for the next time?
Yeah, we're gonna have some of these, some of those, some of these.
Easier one.
One revision set.
Yeah.
The noise ratings of your mechanical equipment, that's gonna be critical, because you got a lot of neighbors nearby. So you wanna have the right noise attenuation, especially the generator, because even if they're not gonna be running very often, they still are exercised typically once a week or once every couple of weeks.
Sure, right, midday when it's less...
Yeah, but still, even, even midday can be cumbersome, you know? So whatever you can do to make sure that those are as reasonable as possible. I know they're not gonna be low, but I mean, at least not overly...
There is sound attenuation being purchased for the generators. So there is, there's sort of levels of that. I don't know which level it is, that's what I can ask you.
Okay.
But we'll be...
What else do we have to say? Something from the selectmen regarding the... Oh, the tie into, from the selectmen regarding tying into the drainage, the town drainage.
You're gonna meet with Mr. Oak for Thursday?
Yes.
We have a meeting next Wednesday night.
I certainly would like to see if they're not gonna move that station over, or move it, so they do not have to back off that road with that station. Far as I'm concerned, that's unacceptable.
But that's what would have had to happen if you put the station in in North Hadley Center on that other plan that you had, they would have to back in then.
Listen.
I'm just saying, John, that's the original plan, there was a back in. It was not a no turnaround down there.
Limited plan there, and your town administrator screwed that whole project up.
Oh, Jesus.
Don't tell me, oh, Jesus. Because there was a covenant on that land, and I asked him the day after the CBA, you guys just make more damn excuses than I ever heard, heard of. Every time is another excuse.
Okay, so three conditions, or three, three items on the to-do list.
Noise attenuation, planning? And we need a select board policy on drainage tie, tie-ins from development to the public system. And will it be a different rule for municipality, municipal use, or the same rule for everyone?
Then I wanna see that drawn on the roof. If everybody's satisfied with that building sitting there, not moved over. The Stockbridge Road wasn't there.
What, what do you mean by a loop?
Just like that center station, so they drive in, when they're coming back, they drive in.
Oh, just, oh, okay. No, no, you mean all around the back, they have one door.
No, not around the back, because there, there's only one door in the back, there's not two doors.
There's two doors in the front, one door in the back.
Right.
So you let it one drive.
Which way is that truck gonna face in the back, is it gonna face out to get out in the back that way?
It, it could face out the back way or it could face out the front way, depending on what piece of apparatus it's gonna be.
Which way is that set up?
It's not set up that we will be driving the truck through when we come back from the call, it would be either backed off of forty-seven, or you, we spoke about, you asked, you know, look into different options for that, and if there's, you know, we've discussed doing a light in the center of North Hadley, and there's also, I did some research on some other departments, and we could potentially put a small hammerhead, I think I talked to Phil about it as well, to the north, where we could pull in and have enough room to be able to back in there and not do a loop in with, so you could pull in the driveway with a, a hammerhead.
That would, that would keep the trucks off the road.
The problem is with that, if you future expand, and if you move the S round, that's all you'd have to do is just fill in a green and you got another door, and you got access straight out.
Right.
A hammer is not gonna do that.
Well, if you have, if you added an additional bay, you would have enough room to turn in the driveway with the truck as it was. So you could actually pull into the driveway and back in, if you added another hole.
Sure.
Yeah.
Right.
It's, this is what we're, I think.
And that's the turning radius that would, that would require to do that, so.
What's that?
That's the truck coming in, doing this, and then backing up into, so I was just checking, not designing really a hammerhead, I was just checking how much space I needed, so the chief is correct that if you had the other bay and this was a driveway, it's an extra ten feet that you would need to then do this, so basically the, with the extra bay and the extra drive, they could also do that, take type of movement.
Yeah, but an extra bay may never happen.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the common, that's the theory.
The only thing, um, yeah, and what we were looking at, what would it look and how much, how much we would have to extend that, that piece of driveway, so that was the idea of that.
I wanna see a loop put in there, like a center station, or what's that look like, and then allow that far enough back, if they expanded another bay, they'd be out of that.
How, how deep is the station?
As long as it doesn't cost any more money to the project.
Stop it.
Where are we gonna get the money?
Did they mention, you want the dimension from?
Where are we gonna get the money?
Around eighty-one, eighty-one Peterson.
Think about it, it's about.
Come to your house, knock, knock.
About seventy-five feet. Okay, because, yeah, from here to here, seventy, seventy-five feet, so a little bit, about seventy-eight, so about seventy-five feet.
We're not doing a change order.
All right, can you have that in two weeks?
Yeah.
Yes.
First two of the AMHs.
Yep.
The designs ain't much. Do you want to pack that in with my other planning commission?
I'm sure.
I don't think it's gonna take very long, we've got everything covered, and, um.
What's the town meeting date chosen?
What's the town meeting?
For, for the, the first, first Thursday and May.
First Thursday and May.
So, before Thursday, so it's May second.
It's the second.
That's, that'll be it, that's today?
I think so, I'm there, if it's not the ninth, second of the ninth.
Okay, we, we're not filed yet, okay, all right. So, so you have the record to draw for the.
Yes, I got it.
Okay.
I, I get, I want to read this.
Gentlemen, gentlemen, we still have meeting on.
Yeah, yeah.
I get, I get an email from Chris White, that's really upsetting, and you sit next to, except, and you, Joyce, John, I mean you, you're the one that instructed, I wanted information about radiuses and all this other stuff for this, this project, and this architect or this, uh, so-called, uh, project manager, he said, I received your voicemail for approximately noon today, uh, noon time today, I understand you spoke to the project architect of the fire substation prior to calling me, I also understand you indicated to him that you would be calling me with the same inquiry, I understand your inquiry is who made the decision to locate the proposed fire station, fire substation in the location at the project property currently shown on the site plan already provided to the planning board for site plan approval. I have spoken to select board chairman, who is also on the fire substation, uh, committee, select board liaison regarding to your inquiry, Joyce advised that I not call you back, I'm gonna tell you something, last time you threatened me, all right, about calling and what, I'm gonna tell you something, you too, and you listen good, if you don't provide the facts, which you get paid for, and play these stupid games that you play, just like not complying with the zoning before in the senior center, you're doing the same damn thing here, and I'm not gonna vote for you screwing around like this, and you.
Mr. Chair.
Don't you, don't, I'm not done talking.
Mr. Chair.
I'm not done talking.
Did we not have?
Do not recognize her yet.
That we were going to only go between chairs. Uh, when we were developing our plans between the senior center library and subfire station and that, we were only going to be speaking to the chair.
You go between chairs for four votes from him, do that, I'll see how that works. I had it with your crack, and you watch this guy, he's gonna put a change order later, and then there's gonna be more money, just like, just like the hundred and fifty thousand dollars you spent for him and the architect for.
With your turnaround, John.
What?
You're already asking for a change order with your turnaround.
You know what the problem is with you, you guys are running too fast not walking, then, then we turn around and say, we don't like this, and this is gonna be changed, that's a change order, that's your fault, not my fault.
You're saying that.
His, his fault is you hired him to follow all applicable laws, state, federal, and local bylaws and zoning laws, he couldn't do that on the last project, but here he is running again, instead of coming in here, when first he did this at the other one, it was right on our agenda, and I asked this board to put it on the agenda every time the planning board meet, before it even got to town meeting, and they did so, so mistakes weren't made like they make today, and then you spend all this money to design, and then now you're gonna redesign, you better knock that stuff off, 'cause you're costing the town a lot, and so is he.
We are, he is.
Who the hell said in here not to talk to me, it was you, is he lying about it?
He doesn't, he doesn't.
Has she told you that verbally?
He doesn't have to speak to you.
Oh, he don't?
No.
Then I don't have to vote for it either, do I, without the information? I'm gonna have all the information on any project that's stepped in this board, or I will not vote for something that I don't know, I don't understand.
It's up to them to bring you that information at your meetings, you do not have to go running around, going here, going there.
Listen, Joyce, I'm not you, I'm a researcher on everything I do, you research after the fact.
This is why we hire people to give us the information.
You hired him last, that's what I said, I don't want this running in a ditch like the last project, and change orders.
Going in a ditch.
That you had no problem, you didn't even ask him why he didn't comply with the zoning laws, everybody I talked to, whether they're engineers, lawyers, and you paid them what? He was hired.
I don't think, I don't think we need to rehash all this tonight, we're not here.
Yeah, I, I think.
I think we're off the subject here, we're not on the subfire station.
No, no, listen, it's not personal, I gathered the information to try to bring it back to the board.
It is personal.
But, but you see what the end resulted, it was personal.
So, are we going to try to do this for March fifth, or do it on March nineteenth?
Yeah, six months from now.
Disco. We'll, we'll talk with PBTC person, we'll, we'll take it back to PBTC. So it'll be March fifth, March fifth. You got it, Kyle?
Yes, March fifth.
You gonna be on vacation?
Thinking jokes at us.
Okay, well, that, are you going to be on vacation?
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, that would be a reason to change the date, because we're gonna require four affirmative votes. With anything else, unless. You want, even the change? No, I just asked the question, I didn't get a clear answer, so. All right. Moving on.
Okay.
We have an invoice for Disco for one eighty-three.
Freezing ice cube.
Hey, uh, Fire Chief.
Okay.
Hey, Fire Chief, can we get a permit for a little bonfire in the middle to warm this place up during that meeting, roll some hot dog.
Uh, chimichanga.
We might as well break up the chairs, they're not gonna be good for anything going forward.
That's okay, chief, for you?
You need a lighter?
It's cold in here.
Okay, it's just different, I, I'm used to seeing it.
We got invoice for Disco for the, yeah, public notice, legal notice for one eighty-three and forty cents, and then we have another legal invoice for the duplication of the public hearing on the proposed marijuana bylaw, and that one is for three oh nine forty-six.
So moved.
Motion to pay, second, oh. Three oh nine forty-six. With Mike's left, oh, Mike's here.
Mike's here.
Mike's here, okay, all, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed, motion to pay is up to it, and. The zone bylaw, I'm not getting them on. No, but I, I think I'll put them on, we don't have it as a, let's see, do we have any tonight, it's a future discussion topics. Right here. Wayward amendments to prior action, what, and a zoning bylaw in development. That's more like general question, but let's put it, let's put it under future topics.
What's that?
So, at the next meeting, uh, there have been a couple of proposals, um, I think I circulated them to everyone, but I will double check that, um, I, we got an email from the town administrator with a number of proposed zoning articles, a couple of which came from the building inspector, one to redefine the parking bylaw, uh, one had something to do with signs, is it not? Yeah, some signs. He wants internally illuminated and blinking signs. Signs, um, parking, and swimming pools.
I thought we were gonna ask, ask him to withdraw that, so we can talk about that and concentrate what we have in front of us.
Well, that's what we're gonna talk about, um, again, we don't have it down for action tonight, so we're just taking it up as what we will be talking about under the future discussion topics heading, so, uh, the bylaws were for, um, parking.
Well, can't you just put bylaw, um, so we can talk about any bylaw in there?
I have it down.
So leave it general?
I can do it for a future meeting, I can't do it for tonight.
Right.
So, yes.
Why don't you put the fire substation too, if there's anything comes up with that?
Well, we're gonna be talking at the next meeting, we only got, that, that is at the next meeting, May fifth, March fifth is the next meeting.
Oh, that's the one that was final design?
Yeah. Okay, and then the, there is a proposal that came through Attorney Reedy, I presume on behalf of his client to. He's supposed to get it, yes, we can put that one down. Okay. That was a bit more clear, we got letter from.
And what's he, what, what's he want on that?
Attorney Reedy wants to rezone a parcel of land on the other side of the bike path on Middle Street, that if not corrugating the senior overlay district.
Huh?
Um, and rezone them to be in the senior overlay district, to add them to the senior over, to extend the senior overlay district.
And he wants that before.
He wants, he wants that for the annual town meeting in May. Is this sore, there, Jim? Yes.
And you're gonna put that on there?
The.
How many, how many articles that's gonna make it to town meeting?
For zoning articles, we have potentially two zoning articles and two general bylaw articles that we are proposing. That we are proposing, if these go through, I believe it'll be five more articles, one, two, we can't possibly put these together, make a disaster, one, two, three, no, one, two, three, four, five, yeah, five, five, five additional zoning articles.
I say his, let it be to follow.
So.
Come on, vote for his, for, they ain't gonna tell me, you get enough on the plate.
It's possible that, uh, the building inspector may want more of a discussion on his proposals.
Well, I talked to him today about that, and he's, his intent was not to put it on the fingers for us to take it and think about it and talk about it.
That's, okay, that's proper, that.
That would make more sense.
That is not how the town administrator packaged it when he sent it to us.
Right. Is that shocking?
Um, so, uh, I will, um, I'll add an item for zoning bylaws. Yeah, and depending what we talk about, we can always, um, put that on that one, we may not get into a lot of discussion on it, maybe on the nineteenth. Yeah. We can ask Tim to attend and talk about his proposals. Okay, I'm just gonna add it, for the next, for the next one, okay.
You can add it on our agenda?
I'm gonna add it to the agenda, just so we can talk.
What's the status, did you find somebody for the minutes, Phil, yet?
Uh, no, Jennifer was out most of last week with a family issue, so I didn't get feedback from her.
Do you have any expected date when that can be done?
I expect to hear, I expect to actually talk with her later this week, and we'll see, okay, so I'm gonna put zoning bylaws down for the second of the sixteenth as well. Okay, well, second of the public hearing on. On the. Marijuana. On the adult marijuana. Right. And we'll probably have to have a, continue that to a, a second public hearing, we also have to have a public hearing on the MS four, and whatever else. Whatever else comes up. Comes up. Right. So do you wanna book that now for? They're gonna have to, would, book that for the second Tuesday of, has to be, say, April sixteenth, right, because if they have the town meeting on the second, we will do and have it on a public hearing, unless we schedule some special day, which we could, we need it, we should know within a week what's happening with all these. Okay, um, and you have the second was the public hearing for the adult.
This is, you, are accompanying you on your line?
Yeah, those are all ours. Okay, so, uh, one thing that came up, we got a, an email from Town Hall that, um. Oh, yeah. There, we, we had, Jim had published for two public hearings, one for March nineteenth for Disco, and the one for. April second. And. March nineteenth may be okay. May be okay here, but. The second is probably gonna. Probably not. So we'll have to, rather than change the public notice, and we can just change the date, we can just, we'll just, we can post, we can. Change the location like we've done before. We can put a, uh, take, take the location change to the rubble, in the parking lot. There, we have many ways of getting that piece out now, so that looks like, that pretty much fills up our. I think you requested of, uh, was it Jennifer? Yeah. Of the first and third Tuesday for. Of the first and third Tuesday for the duration for the town hall. Yes, going forward, uh, probably, definitely April, and going forward, we'll be meeting at town hall in the upstairs meeting room, on the first and third Tuesdays.
And the plan room is gonna be just to the west of that meeting room, right?
It's gonna be the corner office in the front.
Front, sort of front.
Front corner office. Yeah, that used to be what office, I couldn't think of.
Accountant.
The accountant was in there for a while. Before that, because the accountant was downstairs in, in, in.
In the corner.
In the corner.
Then they moved him all upstairs.
Oh, okay. I don't remember who was there. Like, when we were in the town hall, trying to think who was up in that corner office. Doesn't matter. Don't remember. Okay. Anything else? So it will be, uh, the, the conservation commission has already moved to the second floor in the, what? When we were in town hall, the office of the conservation commission was just next to ours, that little room at the end. They're back in there now. Okay. And, uh, building inspector is gonna stay up there, Board of Health is moving downstairs. Right, they were modifying.
Into the assessors' office.
Into the front office of the assessors.
Well, that's not the front, that's the rear.
There will be a second meeting space set up in what was the front half of the Board of Health office. Oh, okay. Um, so it would be possible to have a second meeting going on at the same time.
Very small meeting.
A small meeting, but not every meeting.
Two people.
Needs the full table. So that's going forward, so we'll be back in town hall.
Do they have heat there?
I don't, probably can't be any worse in this place.
Well, I'm gonna tell you something, I think they do this on purpose, 'cause they go across there, it's seventy degrees in here.
Well, you go, go through the double doors, and it's warm.
Exactly, what do you think?
In the hallway, I look, open, open the hallway doors, let the heat come in this way.
John, what's the responsibility of the heat in here, what's happening? Somebody shuts off a special valve here for us?
I never found out the secret to that. Sometimes this kicks out warm air, tonight, it's cold air all night long.
There's not, there was not a hot, enough hot air flowing around this meeting to warm up this building today.
Anything, I have nothing else. I have nothing else. Motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Are you tired, James, you yawn and all?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is history, thank you, and thank you, John.